Okay, welcome everyone. We've just had a few technical questions that had to be answered and I guess just answered them. So, welcome to the zoning board meeting of Thursday, August 28th, 2025 here in Riverhead. Could we stand for the pledge, please?
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make sure our phones are off, that would be appreciated.
So, we did have a reserved decision on for appeal number 2025-023 for William Osborne, 2705 Roanoke Avenue in Riverhead. This is going to be rescheduled for a decision on September 11th, 2025.
Moved.
Second, and Mr. Zewski.
Aye.
And I voted aye. So, that is moved and adjourned to September 11th.
For our first public hearing tonight, appeal number 2025-026, Agnieszka Gosk, 459 Hamilton Avenue, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-123-2-71, Residence A40 zoning, for a proposed single-family dwelling. Applicant requests variances and/or relief from Town Code Chapter 301-11, where proposed front yard setback is 9.5 feet, minimum required is 50 feet, where proposed side yard setback is 3.3 feet and 16.5 feet, minimum required is 25 feet, where proposed combined side yard setback is 19.8 feet and the minimum required is 55 feet, where proposed impervious surface coverage is 40.2%, maximum allowed is 15%, and Chapter 301-9A1C, where proposed rear accessory setback is 2.5 feet, minimum required is 20 feet.
Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. Please state your name, address, and if you're gonna testify, also your name and address, please.
My name is John McNeil. I'm the architect of record for the project. I dwell at 321 Riverside Drive, Riverhead, New York. I spoke to Matt earlier, just I'm on the member of the ARB. I just didn't know if that was...
Okay, thank you.
Can I discuss the owner of 459 Hamilton Avenue? Oh, can you sorry come to the microphone?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Agnieszka Gosk, the owner of 459 Hamilton Avenue.
You swear to tell the truth also?
Yes, I do.
Very good. Thank you.
Sorry for mispronouncing your name.
Go right ahead.
Ms. Gosk requested for me to design her a new dwelling in replacement of the existing one that has fallen into disrepair over the years. So, in keeping with the setbacks existing, we kept the front setback at 9.5 feet, which is the existing. On the side yard, we pushed it away from the property line by 0.2 feet. On the adjacent side, it's a little bit narrower at 16.5, we made the house a little bit wider. The existing shed in the back right corner of the property has been there, you know, in its location for many years, and are in hopes of keeping it on the property. The proposed garage, we, on the one side, the side yard, we moved it a little bit further away. The existing garage is 1.8, I believe. And then, on the back, we kept it at 2.5, where they proposed they would like to keep the garage. And then, for the lot coverage, we are, you know, quite a bit over the allowed, but majority of that comes from the asphalt driveway.
If you know how, when was that house built, anyway?
I don't know.
It was, I believe it was like, it's over like 100 years old. It was like 19 something.
Okay.
Anyone in the audience have anything to say about this variance? Henry?
Yeah, just a few questions. So, the original house was located 7.2 feet on the east. That was the side yard, correct? And now it's 7.5?
Yes.
And on the west, it was originally 17, 17.2, and now it's 16.5?
Yes. The house, the original house was 25 foot change, and we're making it 26.
Right.
So, we increased on one side and narrowed the side yard on the other.
Right. And the increase for the impervious surface, correct me if I'm wrong, that's related to having the driveway actually traverse the property and go to the garage?
Yes.
And previously, the driveway kind of dead-ended at the back of the house, several feet from the garage?
Yeah, a lot of it was gravel, too.
So, the shed, the 12 by 5 by 9.4, so according to the code, it's required to be five feet away from the side and rear yards. So, in order to comply, that shed would have to be relocated.
Is that shed located like at a concrete foundation or wooden?
I think that would be our only, I'd have to double check on that. I don't know at the moment, but I could find out. I think that would be the only caveat to, you know, potentially moving it, having to get it off the foundation and, you know, relocate it, you know, sell another new foundation and then, you know, putting it back.
Heather, I don't think we have any record or indication whether or not there is a foundation to that, correct?
No, I mean, there is nothing of record on the shed. The house, I think, had a letter of pre-existing use. I know the building department records were lost in the fire. So, the original letter of pre-existing use may have been lost, but there is like a digital recording of it. So, the house itself has a letter of pre-existing use. I don't know when the shed was put there, but there's no corresponding seal for the shed or building plans. You know, the size, it would count as the free shed. That doesn't need a permit because it's less than 144 square feet. But, the caveat to that is it has to be at least five feet from the property lines.
Yeah, I mean, if that's okay, we'll be meddled with moving it.
So, you're a man of all that relocating?
Yeah.
And you're good.
Figure logistics on moving it, yeah.
Yeah, the problem I see you have is, I mean, at best, the property itself is only 50 feet wide. If you're gonna put a 28-foot house in it, which is not a lot, it's gonna get tight. So, I have no problem with this.
So, Mr. Chairman, with respect to appeal number 2025-026, I move that the appeal of Agnieszka Gosk, 459 Hamilton Avenue, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map 600-123-2-71, Residence R840 zoning, for variances into a relief from Town Code Chapter 301-11, where proposed front yard setback is nine and a half foot, minimum required is 50 foot, where proposed side yard setback is 3.3 foot, 16 foot, minimum required is 25 foot, where proposed combined side yard setback is 19.8 foot, minimum required is 50 foot, where proposed impervious surface coverage is 40.2%, maximum allowed is 15%. In Chapter 301-9A1C, where proposed rear yard accessory setback is two and a half foot, minimum required is 20 foot, be granted, subject to the relocation of the 12 and a half foot by 9.4 foot shed to a minimum distance of five feet away from the rear and side property lines. Be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector. Second. Second, and Mr. Zewski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, it's been granted. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Ms. McNeil.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.
Good night.
Next appeal is appeal, appeal number 2025-027, John Sullivan, 108 Beach Road, Waiting River, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-26-3-52, Residence B80 zoning, for a proposed single-family dwelling. Applicant requests variances and/or relief from Town Code Chapter 301-31, where proposed front yard setback is 44 feet, minimum required is 60 feet.
Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. Please state your name and address.
Marka Majuski, 30 Stoller Drive, East Buck, New York, 11942. I'm here on behalf of my client, the property of 108 Beach Road in Waiting River. The lot is 8,000 square feet, single and separate since 1953, and is located in RB Current Zoning District. We are requesting a minor relief to allow construction of a new single-family residence. The code requires a 60-foot front yard setback, and we proposing 44, a relief of 16 feet. This lot did comply with a small lot ordinance of reliefs. This has been confirmed in a denial letter from the building department that we received. This proposed home will be two-story residence with 1,200 square foot footprint. There were now a preparation, a neighbor that I think is here tonight raised concern about flooding along Sixth Street, which extends off of Beach Road. After consultation with Highway Department, we learned that Sixth Street is not a dedicated town road, but a private street, and it's unclear who is responsible for the drainage of that road. While my client is now responsible for Sixth Street, we want to be good neighbors. We committed to providing adequate onsite drainage to manage runoff from the new home, including the installation of drywells, as recommended by engineer, which with the flexibility to oversize them if necessary. This will ensure our project does not add to existing conditions. We also understand the AI sanitary system will be required and will obtain approval from the Suffolk County Department of Health before moving forward to the building department. We respectfully ask for this approval of this modest setback relief, so that my client can proceed with building on this long-established lot. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions?
Did I understand correctly that your client's prepared to comply with anything required by the building department with respect to gutters and leaders and drywells? Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Is anyone in the audience that wants to address this? Please step forward.
Can we all come together?
One at a time, please, and take, go to the podium, please.
Okay, I'll start because let me just say, I'm Dan Weedman.
Well, get to the podium first, please.
Okay. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. Please state your name and address.
Daniel Weedman, 118 Beach Road, Waiting River.
How close are you located to this house? Are you next door or across the street or where?
I'm right next to them, going north across Sixth Street.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So, one concern I have right away, I think there's a request for only one variance, when the application I received shows a request for two variances. One, as they stated, the second should be for Sixth Street, and it's, it's in the report, it's on the plot plan that the architect made. On Sixth Street's side, they're asking for 20, the requirement is 60. Now, I emailed things to him today.
Yes, and I shared them with the board and the board's counsel.
Okay, good, good. Thank you, thank you, Heather. Where do we, just for the record, do we have two variance requests here?
No, you do not.
No, you do not.
You do not.
It's in the copy of the application that I got from the website, there's two items, but it's also in the architect's diagram. We'll put down, I mean, it's evident self from that, that there should be another variance request.
Well, they're appealing the determination from Andre, a senior building inspector. So, the appeal is not deviated from that. What some may place on a survey may or may not be relevant to the zoning officer's determination. In addition, I have a question for you. So, you're directly across the street, correct?
Directly across.
And what is your side yard from the house to Sixth Street?
It would be Sixth Street, and I have a picture. I have two, two pictures that would help, but unfortunately.
Sure.
Do I give them to you?
You can actually put them up on the...
On the table, and then they'll come up on the screen.
Okay, yeah, so this is the flooding issue. Oh, okay, you, I didn't answer you. Okay, that's not the answer to your question quite yet. If you put, can you put this one too? Thank you. We'll get to that water in a second. I'm just trying to clarify, that's Sixth Street there, to the right, and this will serve two purposes. My house is to the left, and this has recently been done, the little trees and the greenery there. Unfortunately, when they came to post this side, you could see they, they ran their trucks. We're in a very tight area.
Just so we know, we've all been there.
Oh, yeah, you know, I heard. Okay, good.
We visit the sites.
Oh, great, thank you.
This row of arborvitaries?
Yes.
That's on the applicant's property or your property?
That's on my property.
Those are yours?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, let's see, we can go to the other picture. This is looking, this is the old, it doesn't look like the arborvitaries and everything. This is the old one, and before we did all the work, but this gives you an idea of the property, which is right across the street. Sixth Street that you were just looking at is underwater. I mean, I could walk up to it and point to it. But, the lot is across, and then Sixth, which is a good 12 feet wide, wide, is underwater, and the water is coming close to my house. So, all that work you saw I did recently, because I'm trying to grade my, my property, so that when there's the next heavy rainfall, that it doesn't come so close. You see, I have an ongoing issue with, with water and, and...
So, could you do me a favor? Could you approach this photograph and show me where your house is, where the road is? No, if you do it right on camera, right on camera, it'll, it'll, and then show me where the applicant's property is.
Right on camera.
Just point to the picture.
Oh, I see, okay, great. All right, so, let's see, these are the steps from my house. You're saying that, right? And if you, this picture's not on yet, is it?
No.
Okay, so just here. So, this is coming down from the house, but this has all been redone now.
That, so, was that your rear yard before you redid it?
It's, it's not a rear yard, it's, it's a front yard, so to speak. I have a rear yard that's separate.
Okay, is this the quote, "front yard", fronting on Sixth Avenue?
On Sixth Street, yes, yes, yes.
So, this is the front of your house, those little white steps?
Yeah.
And you're looking out onto Sixth Street?
Correct.
And that's water on Sixth Street?
Yes, from a heavy rain. That's a heavy rain.
And what property is to the opposite side where the fence is?
Okay, to the left.
Yeah.
That's couple right there.
So, could you point to that on the photograph?
Yes, that would be here, and they have access through Sixth Street to get to their house.
Okay.
And this is beach here.
Okay. So, it appears the house immediately to the east of yours, on the same side as Sixth Street, has a considerable amount of water? Okay.
Yes. And when you say house, you're talking, so we have their house. To the east is where the fence, the ugly fence is, it's gone.
I'm just gonna show everybody.
Yeah.
So, this property in here?
Yes.
That's your neighbor immediately to the east?
No. So, that's also my property, too. So, it's hard to tell from the picture.
Significant water on that property?
This last, it was this year, it was last year when we had that, you know, once in 100?
Okay.
Yes, and, and that is so, yeah, you know, the argument, I realized that the water is coming from the rain and that sort of thing. One of my main concerns is, of course, to, to capture maybe some of it, but the big thing is about grading. As we build this, we have to have a plan for grading, because that property goes up. Otherwise, we don't, more water will get pushed my way. I'll build a wall, and before you know it, Sixth Street will be a canal, and they'll never get, you know, you know what I'm saying? Well, so we have to have a plan, a management plan, whatever they call it, for when they build, how are we gonna do the grading, and specifically, too? Otherwise...
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Their property, it, it runs on a slope, is that correct?
Correct.
And the slope runs, I guess you would say, from the south, north, is that correct?
The slope runs from the east to the west, correct, guys? On Sixth Street. So, they're up higher on Sixth.
Yeah, they're, they're higher now.
Yeah, and they don't get...
So, if they build a house, and I understand they're gonna put a basement in, it would actually lower that slope to be less runoff. Will you explain to me why not?
Well, I don't know. I don't, I don't even know anything really about it until...
Well, I understand that they're gonna put a basement in.
Okay, this new house, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
It's gonna, basically, if it's gonna be any water in it, it's gonna run to the basement.
You would think so, because they have a door on that side.
Well, just saying.
Yeah.
We anticipate to be a basement there.
So, if I understood the comments that you just made, a portion of their property is at a higher elevation than Sixth Street, and then your, then your property, correct?
Yes, so they're...
So, that exists. They didn't bring in film and create it. That lot is configured in such a way that there are portions of it that naturally have higher elevation.
Yes, as you're going south, it clearly goes up that lot.
Correct.
Right. So, again, how you're gonna design this, this should be some kind of design with the level, level of the ground and which way it's sloped?
If you look at the detail?
Right.
And the architect, engineer design, they placed in a significant amount of drains, French drains, gutters. Under Riverhead Town Code, and quite frankly, probably every code, zoning code in New York State, you are required to maintain your own stormwater runoff.
Yes.
But you are not required?
Right.
To remediate stormwater runoff on other people's property that are not related to the property, to their property and their improvements.
Right. So, a question would be, because it's new to me, if they decided to build up the lot, just build it up, put their house at a much higher level, and the water comes, now they're higher than me, so the water won't go up to, the water will accumulate more on my part. That's, that's my problem?
So, as I stated, under the law, they have to maintain their own, their own stormwater.
Right.
If they quote, designed their land and constructed their improvements, their house, in such a manner that they were not maintaining their own stormwater, that would be an issue between the parties.
Between, that's right. Well, again, this is a good time to bring it up, though, because I don't know about it. So, that's why I was thinking, I studied, I know you mentioned that the town already, there are regulations in place. I know when they, their gutters have to go to a drywell, but I really don't know the, I haven't gotten to an engineer or anything, the first thing to recommend, other than to say, "Look at the water, I understand what you said about it."
It's not water. You're asking us to look at water that truly appears to be impacting your property.
Oh, let me make a correction. Yeah, you can't see it, but here, this is the, the edge of their property?
Right.
It goes in 30 feet, and it's deep. Yeah, I couldn't capture it in this picture, but it's, so, you know what it is? We're in a very low, low spot there. We're at the bottom. So, the property and, and us, both of us, are in the ground zero of the bottom of the well, so to speak. And, and so, it is going heavily into their side. It's not like it's all mine. So, what they can do is maybe start building it up, then I can do it to it. I can even put a wall up, and before you know it, we can turn Sixth Street into a canal.
So, I'm not sure how you designed your property. The way they're proposing to design is they've put a lot of engineering into it to manage their stormwater. I mean, the plans make it clear, they, they...
You referenced that before. I didn't, all, I didn't see much on that in the plans. I have the plans. Do you, can you put that up?
Did you hear them indicate before that they're, they're gonna maintain stormwater via gutters, leaders, and drywells as required? Did you hear that?
I did. So, I wanted to speak, because when, when, when that's being said, who is actually going to be checking on it as a building inspector or?
Yes, that's correct.
That's why, yeah.
That should satisfy you.
Well, but I just wanted to see some detail on what they, you said there's a lot of detail here?
Plan.
Look, I didn't, I didn't get this. But, where, where are the, the water captured?
There's a French drain, I think, in the cellar entrance stairwell.
Okay, that's a French drain. What about drywells?
I don't know if they're specifically on that plan. Can the applicant's representative speak to maybe where they would be placed or?
They may, may not be represented. They've indicated they're gonna supply.
I heard it, and, and by the way, I'm not, I'm just wondering, you know, for the first time, how do I, you know, know these things are gonna happen, and what recourse do I have if they don't happen?
It's gonna be inspected, and that's one of the provisions that we, we're probably gonna include in it.
Because it's, it's a sort of a gray area for me. But, other than that, I, I think we've covered that enough. Except, of course, we're gonna get back to, that we have one or two variances here, because, and Steve is gonna talk about it. It, it's a lot of, a lot of feet they're asking for, in addition to the small lot ordinance, which is really designed to help you get, I used it, a small house, a small lot. But, now they're asking even for more beyond the small lot. And on the side, it's, it's 40 feet. So, just in general, I mean, this, and Steve will talk, it just seems like a big ask. But, is, is this, you saw the lot, it's very tight, you know, to, to put a house in there. It's been empty for years. I'm a little concerned.
So, if I may ask you a few questions? So, your issue, quote, in your opinion, additional relief should have been included, and that additional relief should have been the 60 feet from the road, correct?
Yeah, which, which...
Okay, so the curious thing is, you know, the zoning board tasks staff and its lawyer to do research. So when I did research on your parcel, you don't meet that sixty feet.
I, I, first of all, the, the old house? May not, but the, the new extension I put on, and I'm glad you did the research, that wall was subject to Sixth Street. In other words, I did a small lot ordinance on it.
Okay, so this property.
Yes.
This applicant.
Yes.
Is subject to the small lot as well.
Yes.
Okay. Your house is thirty-two point three feet from Sixth Street.
Correct.
Okay, so you don't meet the sixty feet if it was under the regular code. So you received relief from the sixty feet because you're thirty-two point three, correct?
No, I, I really, I, I got no relief, I, I qualified under the small lot ordinance.
Okay, so why do you believe that this applicant similarly does not have the benefit of the small lot ordinance?
Said, help the benefit? I was just thinking, I qualified under the small lot ordinance. Without, I didn't wanna go for a variance, so I did whatever they asked me, including Sixth Street, but we went to the building department, Andreas, the whole thing. That thirty-two you mentioned, that was all part of the requirement for me to put the extension on the house. And I met it because, and, and I was.
So we're missing something now in the translation.
Yeah.
Heather, the application that we're hearing tonight, does that lot qualify under small lot ordinance?
Yes, so according to Andreas's denial letter, it meets all other setbacks in compliance with the small lot ordinance with the exception of the front yard setback, which is forty-four feet. Small lot ordinance speaks to side yards, rear yards, and lot area for pre-existing non-conforming lots. Um, it does not have any relief for front yard setbacks. So any small lot, regardless of them being able to meet the requirements of the small lot ordinance in terms of other setbacks, has to meet the zoning setbacks for a front yard. So that's why they're asking for relief for a front yard. But Andreas made the determination that all other setbacks were in compliance with Chapter three oh one dash two 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 point one.
So the same relief you got by applying the small lot ordinance, you believe should not apply to this application.
Yeah, we're missing, that's not at all. I, I, I fulfilled the requirements of the small lot ordinance, including the use of streets, Beach Street and Sixth Street, there were separate requirements for footage for them. Small lot is not all inclusive of, of the, of the side yard distances. And this is what we had to clarify because I, I, I came here yesterday, I spoke to two people, one in the building and, and one in planning. And they checked the regulation and said, the side yard on sixty, on Sixth Street is, should be sixty feet, period.
With all due respect, your lot is also on Sixth Street.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And you don't meet the sixty.
It doesn't.
And you did not get a variance.
Because it was different.
I did it each other. I thought, that's distinction without merit. If you have any other points, I'm clear to hear, but right now, that's distinction without merit.
Well, yeah, it's your hearing, so that's, well, you know, we're just not in agreement there, but, but that's okay.
Well, let me, let me ask you another question. You have a garage.
Right.
And I believe, Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, is it ten foot side yard?
And that too.
That's ten feet from the side property line. The small lot ordinance does speak specifically to accessory structures. And for lot areas from zero to thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet, for side and rear street line setbacks, a minimum of twenty feet is required under the small lot ordinance.
So under the small lot ordinance, you claim pertain to your lot, the garage doesn't meet those requirements.
That's incorrect.
It does not.
Well, first of all, not only did it go through a building, first of all, it's an accessory building. And, and, and it's, the rule there, if I can remember, was ten feet from.
Heather, can you quote that again, just one more time?
So for accessory structures inside and rear yards, it's ten feet. But accessory structures inside, side and rear yard street lines, it has, there's a chart that's specific to accessory structures that does speak to a distance from a side or rear street line, it's twenty feet.
And I believe in twenty feet.
Ten feet, according to the.
Property line, but the property is, is ten feet from the road. We, we've been over this many times, I did not invoke any kind of variance. You know, we did everything according to.
Be that as it may, I think the zoning board and council are just trying to say that your, your house itself is less than sixty feet from the side yard abutting side street. And you say that the small lot ordinance granted you that. You didn't have to go for a variance, that's why Andreas made this determination in his letter because they too are covered under the small lot ordinance in terms of side yards.
Okay, I, I thought there were different distances for side yards, by the way, uh, when they applied it to me, but I can't, I'd have to go back to my records.
It's the same area, so if you would fall under the same, um, the same small lot ordinance that's being applied here, it hasn't changed.
Right, I'd have to look at, what is my distance from the extension to Sixth Street, did you say?
Thirty-two point three feet.
And I know that qualified because we went over it. And, and I would have, if it didn't, we would have done something about it.
Okay.
We wouldn't have invoked, you know.
Total dimensions for both side yards for a principal building shall be computed on the basis of four tenths of the lot width. However, no side yard dimension shall be less than four tenths of the total dimensions of both yards computed as aforementioned. And no side yard dimension shall be less than ten feet. So the lot that's before the zoning board tonight is only sixty feet in width. So when you do the four tenths rule, you come up with a combined total side yard setback of twenty-four feet. Then further computing that with, under the four tenths rule, it ends up being nine point six feet. But small lot says no side yard dimension shall be less than ten feet.
Are we talking about my, my extension?
No, I'm talking about the appeal that's before tonight. In your case, your side, if you're saying small lot in this, under this term, applied to your lot, your lot width is eighty feet. So they did that four tenths rule based on your lot.
Right, on mine, I'd have to go back and check. On, on this one here, all I wanted to introduce was that the side yard next to a, a road, and I came here and I checked yesterday, should be sixty feet, but, but be that as it may, we'll put, we'll put that to rest.
You or their two other individuals that you're with, do they have something to add or?
They do, I, I think they'd like to just talk in general. It is the purpose of this meeting, I think, to talk about just in general, why you think a house shouldn't be there, you can, you can.
Well, I think you've made your point why you think the house shouldn't be there.
No, the, the point here being that this is what we're talking about, just everybody, right?
Everybody has an opportunity to speak.
Okay, Steve. He has, okay, so should I go back, or should we stand next to each other?
One at a time, please, at the.
Yes.
We're married.
And Heather.
I don't.
Those records are part of the record.
So you can come up together, you'll get someone's gonna just introduce yourselves individually.
Okay, I'm gonna swear both of you in.
Sure.
Please raise your ready hand, I'll take you one at a time. Please, uh, you solemnly swear, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Okay, state your name and address.
Stevie Camerano, one ten Beach Road.
Holly Warshaw, I never changed my name, sorry.
Go ahead, what have you to offer?
Yeah, I was just going over some points with the property. Um, you know, I was worrying about erosion of neighborhood character and risk of overdevelopment. Uh, the charm of the area lies in natural buffer zones and generous spacing between the homes. Uh, Beach Road's a little unique where we have buffer areas between houses. Um, you know, it's one of the prime reasons why we moved out there, uh, which provides privacy and preserve of rural character wherever. Reducing the lot frontage to forty-four feet disrupts that balance and sets the precedent for denser incompatible development. Once, once granted, parents could make it harder to deny similar requests leading to incremental overdevelopment that permanently alters this neighborhood. There's increased traffic and safety concerns on a shared right of way. The property in question shares a private road right of way at several existing homes, including mine. Reducing the lot, the lot frontage to allow the denser development would likely introduce additional driveways and more vehicle traffic along this already narrow privately maintained road. There's increased risk of congestion, limited visibility, potential conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians, especially in the area that lacks sidewalks or sufficient road width for safe passing. The right of way was never intended to accommodate higher density of housing. The overburning it with more frequent use would negatively impact all residents who rely on it for safe daily access to their homes. Granted, the variance would compromise both road safety and visibility of surrounding properties. The potential impact on property values, my home is located very close to the property in question. I'm deeply concerned about the impact that this proposed variance could have. Allowing denser lot development by reducing the minimum foot frontage from sixty-four, sixty-six feet to forty-four feet would directly affect the character and spacing of our immediate neighborhood. Like many residents, I purchased my home with the understanding that the zoning laws ensure that consistent standard of lot size and density. The sun change and the ease of regulation, especially so close to my property, not only disrupts the expectation but also risks of low on property values, including my own. No demonstrated hardship, a zoning grant should be only be granted when it faces real or specific hardship that prevents them from using the property under existing zoning regulations. And in this case, the request appears to be driven by a builder's desire to prove financial return, which does not qualify as a legitimate hardship under zoning law. Uh, drainage problems and environmental impact on neighborhoods. The property in question already has drainage issues, particularly during heavy rains and snow melt, and reducing the lot frontage would only make the situation worse. There are smaller lots, meaning less open space for water absorption. Fewer buffer zones and more impervious surfaces like driveways and foot, rooftops increases the density on site that already struggles with water management, because, management poses serious risk uh, to neighborhood properties, including mine, which would experience increased runoff to, or overflowing as a result.
I'm sorry, thank you, respectfully. I respect that they wanna build a house there, I respect they bought the property and I understand that. I intuit feel that the house that they wanna build is large for the size property as it is. You said that you had gone out there and you'd seen, we're on a flag lot, I understand people wanna build on that. However, the size of the house and also the fact that it's two stories would mean that as soon as I walk out of my house, six feet in front of me, I'm gonna see cellar stairs and not the street, I'm just gonna see a box. My other concern, so with that, I just think the house is very large for the small amount of property that it is. My other concern is the only way to get to our house is that driveway. There's no other way for us with the other houses like Denny's or the person that they're building. I'm not sure if they're building their own driveway, but that's it for us. So if it floods, which I understand, we kinda take care of that because the town does not. So we put in the driveway, um, because it was dirt, um, which we had to do because it was like canoe village. Um, so I just have a lot of concerns about the size property, the impact that it's gonna have. Again, I get that they wanna build a house, I just think it's very large, too big, too tall. And I have concerns about where they're gonna put the cesspool, I have concerns about that it's going to affect my tiny little cottage.
The, the area itself also, like, if you look at a topographic map, it actually has, it actually acts as a sum. Like, it clearly shows that that area is like a hundred percent flood zone area. So basically, it gets like ten inches of rain deep by probably like thirty feet by forty feet deep. I don't think, I mean, unless they do some calculation that they can prove with the French drain and other drainage systems, I don't think it's gonna actually be, be able to suppress the rain issue. Um, they actually have, the town installed three wells further down the next street and it cannot contain the water.
Stevie Camerano, forgive me, there's a couple of points you made, I, I can't put my head around. You said it's gonna increase traffic. One house, how, how much of an increase for one house? This is a single family house.
Well, it's from our traffic, so Denny's house, he has traffic coming in and out from the house, from his side, and there's also traffic that comes and goes from.
I know, but that's the existing traffic. But tell me, how is this gonna dramatically increase the traffic? It's one, a, a single family house.
The house, the house could have four cars.
Parking on the side.
I mean, no matter what you, what we build there, it's gonna increase traffic. So show me something dramatic.
I think the bigger point is what, what I was saying, which is.
I'll get to that. Secondarily, you said about decreasing property value, we've all seen that. It's a vacant lot. I don't, you find that more attractive than, than a, a new house?
The appeal for our property, for ours specifically, is that because we're a flag lot, we look onto a forest. Otherwise, we'd be looking at the backside of a house.
Well, we're quite clear that I reject the argument that it's, it's gonna decrease the property values because the way it is now, I, look, please don't interrupt me, I won't interrupt you. We've all been there. We've all seen it. And for lack of a better word, it's not exactly pretty now, for lack of a better word, it's unsightly. And how you say it's gonna decrease property values? And, and with respect to the idea of no hardship, there's an expression, equity abhors forfeiture. If you don't build a house there, that property is useless. That's the hardship, that if they don't build a house there, it's, it's useless. And with respect, may I have to your remarks about the flooding, they've already indicated they're gonna take the necessary steps in accord with the building department to assure that there be no flooding issues.
I mean, do they have statistics of how many gallons that they can actually suppress?
It's not necessary. They stay assured that they'll take whatever steps.
Really not before it's the water, that's building department and they'll see that the law is following.
With the ease, with the driveway, you mean, not with their property.
Sorry?
With the, you're speaking of the, the drive, the, the easement, the driveway to get to our property, that, that water? Not, not the flooding on their property, just the, the water on Howard driveway.
When you talk about the driveway, you're talking about utilizing Sixth Street, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so you have stated several times, currently, Sixth Street, your driveway floods.
Yes.
And it has nothing or little to do with this lot.
Right, but putting a house on there. And a large house, I guess that's my point, I, I'm, I'm not, respectfully, I'm not.
Right.
I just feel that the house that they're wanting to put there, I understand they wanna build. That's, that's their right, they bought the property. I just feel that it's quite a large house for that size property.
Looks like it's about a thousand square feet.
And how tall is it?
Twenty-eight feet, according to the plan's maximum allowable height in RB eighty zoning is thirty-five feet.
Okay, so when I walk out of my house, I'm gonna see six feet away from me cellar stairs and a, a square.
There are existing trees there, right?
Oh, yeah, but obviously they're gonna have to be knocked down for them to.
Anyone else in the audience that wanna speak on this variance?
Do we have anyone on Zoom?
All right, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, respect to appeal number two zero two five dash zero two seven, I move the appeal of John Sullivan, one oh eight Beach Road, Waiting River, SATM number six hundred dash two six dash three dash five two. Residents B eighty, RB eight zero zoning, the variance is and or relief from town code chapter three zero one dash thirty-one, with proposed front yard setback is forty-four feet. Memory required is sixty feet. Be granted subject to the following, all storm water to be maintained on site via gutters, leaders, and dry wells, or other means as required by the building department. And in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, filed with the. filed with the building inspector.
Move in second, and Mr. Boiski.
Aye.
Vizel.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that's granted, and just follow the law.
We have minutes from the July twenty-fourth, uh, and that should be twenty twenty-five meeting.
So moved. So moved to be approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next meeting date is September eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.